I have four people. Open how many was incredible.
But praying. Father God, we've been thinking this day and thank the opportunity to come to serve citizens like Canada, but in the most of all the serving. That's gonna just keep us mindful of this season. Resurrection Sunday, what it means to each other, that's gonna have to be just touch our lives and keep us healthy and safe and bless our camp, especially our seniors and our new people. Use us to your will and everything we say in practice and right.
Amen.
I have three freedom of information announcement in the court through the South Carolina Code of nineteen seventy six is amended. The Marion Star Moses Enterprise has been notified at the date, time, place, agenda of this meeting. Item four approval of minutes, March twenty third.
For move.
Second.
Got a motion and second and discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. The eyes have it. At this time, I'd like to recess from regular meeting and open a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, here's the castle. We have a public hearing on or this twenty twenty-three that provide accounting attorney is out with the son. And he asked shape and deny to conduct the public hearing. We had one public, one item on the agenda for public hearing twenty twenty-three that provide.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of council. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh five and ordinance to authorize the conveyance of a portion of Marion County Tax Parcel Number. Zero five five dash zero zero dash zero zero dash one two one dash zero zero zero. Containing two point nine two one acres off Wellman Road to forty-two. Marion LP and Texas partnership pursuant to the terms of a purchase and sale agreement dated October sixth, two thousand twenty-two. To authorize the county administrator or the chairman of county council to execute any and all documents. For the conveyance and transfer of the property and to authorize all matter, all other matters related there to um in effect. Um, the conveyance.
Is anybody in attendance to speak or yes or uh?
All right, at this time, we'd like to close our public hearing and go back into regular session. Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, sir.
Second. Second, in discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. The eyes have it.
Chairman, there are no resolutions that I know of. Um. Ordinance is number eight. Item A, you just had the public hearing on and swap or read that ordinance again.
Yes.
First thing that reads thirty, I'm sorry, thirty.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, I will now read the ordinances. Item A, this is the third reading of ordinance number. Two zero two three dash zero five. An ordinance to authorize the conveyance of a portion of Marion County Tax Parcel Number. Zero five five zero dash zero zero dash zero zero dash one two one dash zero zero zero. Containing two point nine two one acres of Wellman Road. To forty-two FL Marion LP, a Texas partnership pursuant to the terms of a purchase and sale agreement. Dated October the sixth, two thousand twenty-two. To authorize the county administrator or the chairman of county council to execute any and all documents for the conveyance and transfer. Of the property to authorize and all other matters related there to ineffectuate of the conveyance.
What I hear from counsel.
I'm ready.
Got a motion?
Yep.
Got a second. In further discussion on. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. The eyes have it.
Do you want me to do this, Andy?
Excuse me?
Um, ordinance, uh, item B.
Item B, second reading of the ordinance number two zero two three dash zero six. An ordinance amending ordinance number two zero two one dash zero four. Entitled an ordinance to provide for the assurance and sale of a not exceeding three million, three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. General obligation bond of Marion County, South Carolina, to prescribe the purpose, purposes of which the proceeds of said bond shall be expended. To provide for the payment of said bond and other matters related thereto. To add additional uses of the proceeds of general obligation bonds authorized thereunder and other matters related thereto.
The council had a full copy of the orders that first reading was um.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. The eyes have it.
And for everyone in the community, we have an item C on the agenda. Um, or this number twenty twenty-three dash oh seven, that's the non-quiet action because it's only the title of the ordinance.
Item C, finally, first reading of ordinance. Number two zero two three dash zero seven and ordinance to amend sections three, seven, eight, nine, and twelve. Of the Marion County Animal Control Ordinance Number eight two dash six dash eight.
What I hear from counsel.
We don't need an action, you can.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, item nine, committee reports. Committee number one has no report at this time. Committee number two, but counsel and ten.
Has no report, Mr. Chairman, at this time.
Item ten, legal update.
At this time, we do not have a legal update, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Miko Pickett. Forty-two Foundation for the Community Project.
Good morning.
Morning.
If you don't mind, Mr. Bill Nelson is gonna hand you guys a handout. So, I'm part of me, we had a late night last night at the office working on the grant, so I'm a little tired this morning. But um, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to share with you all our new Eat Local PD project. So what is it? The Eat Local PD project is one in which um, Pick Forty-two Foundation has received the grant where we are purchasing food. From socially disadvantaged farmers in quotes, which means um. African-American farmers as well as farms that are solely owned by women. So we will purchase the food. And then we will provide the food for free initially to Marion County. But then eventually we will be expanding to Dillon and Marlborough Counties. As part of this program, we will also be doing free educational seminars. And right now, the it's a, it's a federal grant. That um, the South Carolina Food Policy Council partnered with the South Carolina Department of Agriculture. And the grant itself is six point one million dollars. Pick Forty-two Foundation is one of um, twelve. Aggregators, so we're really excited about that. So we're essentially setting up. A nonprofit food hub in Marion County. So who are our partners? Our partners are. The producers and producers can be anybody who, whether ranchers, farmers, vegetable farmers. People who to uh, make value-added products, as long as those products are grown. And um, made by socially disadvantaged producers. Distribution partners, we have a distribution network of fourteen churches. That um, some of our other food insecurity programs, we've been distributing food through. So our distribution partners have all been trained. And they are on the ground, ready to help us to get this fresh local food out to our communities. And then the community members. Um, one of the things that we realize is that in Marion County, a lot of our health disparities in terms of a high rate of obesity, diabetes. High blood pressure and heart disease comes from the food that we eat. And we all know that fresh food can be quite expensive. So we are really excited to partner with the community as well as we embrace new foods, and I'll tell you about. Our rollout in a minute. So what's our schedule look like? Um, this is something that, once we get good and going, because we know there's not a lot of food coming out the fields. In March, April, right? But on Tuesdays, our farm ambassador will reach out to the producers to see what's on the menu, what do they have to sell to us? Then on Wednesdays is our distribution, is our delivery day. And so that's the day when farmers will bring us their food. And then on Thursdays is the day, we call it, we love Thursdays. That's the day that we take our food and we distribute it to our um, fourteen distribution partners. So. Obviously, this is a big deal and we're very excited to be part of it, and it's not something that we're doing by ourselves, right? So our partners are the South Carolina Department of Agriculture, Clemson Extension. The city of Mullins has been an absolute amazing partner for us. Um. Who am I missing? Oh, and of course, the um, SEDA. And then we are looking for more partners. Um, so as a nonprofit organization, one of the things, one of our challenges has been to set up the food hub. Um, we, we've been at this since early March and we've learned a lot. So, but who wins in all of this? When we look at the winners, we see winners all across the board. The community is gonna be winning because they're gonna have access to fresh local food that is free. That is grown right here in Marion County. And I tell you, I see a day where Marion County and the PD will be known for fresh fruit and vegetables. And this, you know, will we crack the market in terms of taking dollar share away from California and Mexico? Maybe not. But will we be able to create economic development for Marion County? Absolutely, I'm really excited about that, and I'll give you an example as we look at our launch and where we are today. So on March sixteenth. We actually purchased a cow a little bit before, but on March sixteenth, that was the first day that we rolled out Eat Local PD to the community. And what we did is we worked with a local producer, VNS Farms, a rancher, and we purchased the cow. This cow was then processed by the Mullins Processing Plant. Which is in our backyard, our offices are located on one fifty-eight South Main Street. So the processed cow was cut up into a hundred and twenty-four portions. And with one purchase of a cow, we were able to feed a hundred and twenty-four families, fresh local meat in Mullins and Marion. So we was really excited about that. So, right, so you can see where, you know, where we make purchases from local within Marion County. Um, we are providing some awareness, um, some folks did not know about the Mullins Processing Plant. So we are going to be exclusively using the Mullins Processing Plant to process all of our beef. So. A week later, we continued the program and we purchased fresh eggs. As well as sweet potatoes. And the, uh, one of the farmers, TC Yokes, is a ten-year-old boy. And we purchased eggs from him and uh, we were able, as well as Ellerby Farms out of Florence. And with those, we took that food to Zion. Britain's neck, thank you, to Zion and Britain's neck. Right, so as we are, you know, kinda, and then our next purchase, we're gonna be purchasing another cow and we have. Some produce that we're gonna be getting out of Ellerby Farms in Florence. So as we move through this program, we're gonna be able to um, not only feed the community, which is very important. But provide fresh local foods, so we're really excited about that. Um, and we wanted to take this opportunity to share with the council our work. And um, you know, we are still in need, we have. Come in May, June, we do expect that there's gonna be a lot of, uh, not expect, we know, we had a meeting with the farmers just this week. And they're telling us that there's gonna be a lot of food coming out the farms in May and June. And our truck right now is fourteen feet, we could really use a twenty-six foot truck. So, this is not, not, um, so um, does anybody have any questions at this time?
We have a comment. Father, living in my church now in Britain, that um, distributing some of the food. Uh, our only chair, Mr. Watson, who can ask, participates in the program. Uh, down there as well, of distributing some of the food to pilot and mostly elderly people that's gonna pick. From um, this contract so far, it's about maybe it's uh, plus. And he shares here in the back, so thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, and we're a very digital company, so we keep track of every single family that receives, not keep track, but we log. The families that receive the food, so we're able to, um, you know, if you guys want, we can come back later and give you the demographics on the number of people that we're able to help. All right, well, thank you so, I'm sorry.
Partnership, what, what are you looking for when, when you see that city of Mullins is partnership and you see other people's partnership with, with you, what are you looking for?
Well.
I can, I can.
Sure, there's all kinds of ways, so for instance, the city of Mullins, um, they provide us with facilities, I see Mr. Tara Skilce, thank you so much. Um, so the city of Mullins will allow us because we're setting up our hub. And so we use the armory sometimes to store some of our product. I'm, I'm not here to talk about community gardens, but on a community garden side, we also have. Um, all of our community gardens are located on city of Mullins property. Um, and then obviously, um, financial donations are also something that will help us along the way. Um, this particular grant is a reimbursement grant from the SEDA. And if you know anything about reimbursement grants, they could put you in kind of a pickle, right? So we are able to spend sixty-six thousand dollars a quarter in food. If we don't spend sixty-six thousand dollars. A quarter in food, then it doesn't, um, it doesn't kinda get into the community, you understand what I'm saying? So we have to have sixty-six thousand dollars in order to spend sixty-six thousand dollars. Um, we have received to date, um. Twenty-five thousand dollars from various entities um, to help us with seed money, but it's just really important. And I think that, you know, by sharing this program with you guys, you can see that, you know, when we put money into Pick Forty-two Foundation. That money goes right back into the community, so let me explain something else. So the sixty-six thousand that we're able to spend to buy food a quarter, there's um. There's a percentage of that eighteen thousand that we're able to use for admin expenses. And so those admin expenses are used for things like, you see Mr. Bill Nelson here. Um, Mr. Bill Nelson is a member of the team, we have a farm ambassador that is a member of the team, we have the quality control. Um. Coordinator that's a member of the team, because one of the things that we're doing with our program is that we wanna make sure. That at the end of this program, which I didn't tell you guys, but it's twenty twenty-four right now, but it's extendable until twenty twenty-six. So at the end of this program with our um, producers, we want them to be prepared to sell wholesale, so it's also a training program. So we're bringing in the SEDA, they're, I'm helping people get gap certified, we're helping our farmers get FSA IDs. Long when it answer, Mr. Teeny, Councilman Teeny, but um, you know, resources would be great, and we do understand that there is a truck. A twenty-six foot uh, refrigerated truck that the county may own or have access to. That we would love to partner with you guys on. Okay. Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming. Item twelve, Ms. Linda Adams.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Hello, my name is Linda Adams and I'm the trauma counselor with PD Coalition. I would like to thank the council members for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of PD Coalition. Uh, of course, PD Coalition is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the reduction of sexual assault, family violence. And to, and child abuse and to their families as well. Um, PD Coalition has several locations in several counties, and to, in these counties are Chesterfield, Dillon. Darlington, Florence, Marlboro, Sumter, Marion. And Wimber's Counties. PD Coalition was also established in nineteen eighty-six and operates twenty-four hour crisis line for victims and their families in the region. Now, we wanna recognize April, April is recognized as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Our goal at PD Coalition is to raise awareness about sexual violence, which is a public health, human right, and social issue. Sexual violence refers to crimes like sexual assault, rape, and sexual abuse. Now, in the United States, one in five women, one in five women will be raped in her lifetime. And nearly one in two women and one in five men will experience sexual violence, victimization other than rape. But what about sexual abuse victims whose abuses are not strangers or an acquaintance? Questions to ponder. What about victims who are sexually abused by intimate partner? Yes, abusers can also be found in intimate relationships. And to give you one of the myth and facts, just know that most sexual assaults are committed by strangers, it's not rape if the people or person involved knew each other. Fact is, most sexual assault and rapes are committed by someone the victim knew. Among victims between the age of eighteen to twenty-nine, two-thirds had a prior relationship with the offender. Statistics shows that between fourteen percent and twenty-five percent of women are sexually assaulted by intimate partners during their relationships. Between forty and, and forty-five percent of women in abusive relationships will also be sexually assaulted during the course of the relationship. Now, over half. A woman raped by intimate partner was sexually assaulted multiple times by the same partner. Women who are sexually abused by intimate partners report more risk factors for intimate partner homicide than non-sexual abuse women. And from the counseling aspect of it, there are many long-term effects of sexual assault can have on a lifelong impact on the victim. And some of these um. Effects are PTSD. Resorting into harm, harming oneself to deal with difficult or pain feelings, depressions. Alcohol or substance abuse. Eating disorders. Sleep disorder. And suicidal thoughts of actual committing suicide. And as I stated earlier, that. April is also child awareness month. And in this month, we also observe in April to recognize the efforts made by communities and families. In bringing up this issue in front of the world, one out of seven children in the United States. Has experienced physical and sexual abuse. During this month, as well as the whole year, citizens are encouraged to raise the issue of child abuse. And the well-being of children and families around the country. Now, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. The coalition presented to the county council and by a unanimous vote was successful in being awarded a proclamation. That honored the lives of. The lives due to domestic violence. As well as it could have been. A sexual assault within that domestic violence as well. So this proclamation included the names of six victims. I would like to call those names out, please. Uh, Maya Ja Burke. Andrew LaGette. LaShay Raul. Tremaine Rogers. Gloria Swinton. And her unborn child. We vow that these victims' names should never be forgotten, and it is in our mission to say these names when we present in the community. I would like also to share with you with uh, event or two that's happening, actually, this Saturday. Um. April thirteen, let me go back first, April thirteen, we will have Take Back the Night. For more information, just give us a call on that when the young, they didn't give me information. Also, on Saturday, we will have the red class, which is rape against the um. If, um, race aggression defense will be here, here. Here in. Performance Arts Science and Academy. And in Mullins, there would be a Healing Heart Sexual Trauma Empowerment Event going on at that time, that's from twelve to two. And basically, we want to basically recognize and to honor and give information as awareness to sexual assault. For the month of April. And once again, I would like to thank you. The county council members for allowing me to speak on behalf of PD Coalition. Thank you um, for your commitment to helping our, to helping us create a safer community. I really appreciate it. And that will be all at this time. Do you have any questions or anything, anyone would like to?
Any comments, but counsel.
Comments.
I haven't. Did you jump present or give us a? Sign, we put them in short messages, resist the organization, did that last?
Yes, we have um, presentation of awareness, we have ribbons downtown, um, um, Marion. We also have um, the signs on the marquees. Um, as well as on the PD Coalition Marion website. And if you have any um. Information or want to have, want to have any more information, you can please contact the eight four three four two three. Six five six eight. It's eight four three five two three six five six eight. Thank you.
Yeah, y'all had a nice presentation design, I was a part of that, that was very nice.
Thank you, thank you.
Very, very nice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate you bringing us these disturbing.
Disturbing, it is, definitely disturbing.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Mr. George Price.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
I hope you'll, if you're undivided attention. Let me talk and then we'll ask questions. There's something dear to me in my heart is EMS, been in it thirty-three years. We got a major problem. We've had this problem for a while, but it's fallen on deaf ears. To where when we bring it to somebody's attention, whether it be county council members or the county administrator. Is, the answer is, I don't know what to do. I had a solution two years ago and I had a solution last year. The solution is, we need to go to twenty-four seventy-two. Let me explain a little bit about EMS, EMS works twenty-four forty-eight, they work twenty-four hours on. And they work forty-eight hours off. But you probably say, well, they got two, two uh, days off. If they get hammered that day that they work, that first shift off. They are trying to recuperate from their twenty-four hour shift. Not only that, if we're short-staffed on another shift, can we ask the person to stay for forty-eight hours? Are they as good as they were when they came in? On the twenty-four hour shift? Are they out to make mistakes? Fall asleep at the wheel? Get injured or injure somebody else? If we go to twenty-four seventy-two, which means three days off, we would use their uh. Automatic overtime day as their second day off, so they have rest in between. The reason I bring up twenty-four seventy-two and the reason I've brought it up for the past two years, last year specifically. Is Florence County has been doing it for about twelve years, Darlington County has been doing it for about six, seven, eight years, something like that. I knew Marlboro County was going to it in June last year, they went to it on June the sixth. Dillon County went to it and I knew they were doing it in, with their new budget, they were going to it in their new fiscal year, which was this year, and they went to it in October. That puts us four counties surrounding us, this twenty-four seventy-two versus us sitting here at a twenty-four forty-eight. Now, what happens is, is you have people that's looking for another job or coming out of paramedic school or coming out of EMT school. And they weigh their options, who's paying the money, who's paying, who's got the right schedule and stuff like that, when we work in twenty-four forty-eight, they're not coming here. We've put it out on Indeed, we've put it, I've posted on my personal page, on EMS page and stuff like that about hiring, we don't even get anybody certified. Because they're going to where they can go over there, and when they go over there, they make the same annual salary. Near about our same annual salary that we do, but they make more per hour. You realize what our EMTs make? Our EMTs make eleven fifty-five an hour. You can go McDonald's and make more than that, you can go to Walmart and make more than that. This person is out here with somebody's life in their hands. Our paramedic is. Our paramedic is qualified professionals, just like our EMTs, that are able to innovate somebody, defibrillate somebody, start IVs, give medications, fourteen dollars and seventy cent an hour. So we start them out as. We've had instances after last year when I mentioned this, that we've only run one ambulance in this whole county. Some of you know that, some of you don't know that. But there's times that we ran, only had enough staff to run one ambulance in this county. From sickness, vacations, death or whatever, but would only have enough people to run one ambulance in this whole county. Marion Fire Department helped us out by running their ambulance, so, but that's not fair to the citizens of this county. EMS is on the bottom of the toting pole for this whole county. Has been since nineteen seventy-four. Thereabout when EMS was started in this county. Marion County is reactive instead of proactive. I bring stuff to the table, but we never get anywhere with it. I asked for two ambulances last year. Got shot down to start with. You know how long it'll take you to get an ambulance now? One to two years because of manufacturing. I was wanting to put it in there last year so we could try to have one this year. Got shot down. We have two ambulances up there that was remounted when I first came here. Remounted means they take the box off one and put it on a new chassis. They're ten years old. That's ten years ago. You know, the boxes are on those trucks. Twenty-five years old. Do we know what the integrity is of that truck? That's our two spare trucks. We got to do better. Who been in the news for shortages? EMS across the country is in shortage, but we're shorting anybody else around because we're not doing what we need to do. We hired some driver trainees. We're not getting any certified apps. One of the things I want to ask you, have you been to the EMS bases? Do you know what our EMS bases look like? There's parts of animal shelter that look better than our EMS stations. Go to Gresham Basin, pull up. Just pull up. You know where we at for the main station in Marion? We in the back of a hospital, the old hospital in the kitchen area. And we're in the back of the fire department in Mullins. In Gresham, we're in probably a fifty, sixty, seventy-year-old building down there. We can't recruit people with this kind of, we can't recruit people with the schedule we have. We can't recruit people with what facilities we have. I'm here today to ask you with the new budget, and if we could do it beforehand, we need to go to twenty-four seventy-two. It'd cost us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars thereabout, two hundred and seventy-three dollars, two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And salaries plus the benefits would come up to about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would take an EMT from eleven fifty-five to sixteen twelve an hour. That'd take a paramedic from fourteen seventy to twenty fifty-two an hour. This is adding a whole nother shift. A BMT would go from eleven fifty-five an hour to sixteen twelve an hour. A paramedic would go from fourteen seventy hour to twenty fifty-two an hour. Guys, we can't even get people to come work part-time over here because other counties are paying more for them to go work part-time. We only have about three people working part-time for us. So when we have somebody out sick or on vacation, we don't even have nobody to fill in.
Basis of twenty-four seventy-two is adding another shift.
It is adding another shift. That's where the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars comes from to add another shift. The benefits like your FICA, your Social Security, your insurance, and your retirement match.
You all got a question?
Yes, sir.
You're working twenty-four forty-eight now.
Yes, sir.
And you're having trouble finding people to work. And I understand why you're trying that. I mean, you saw a sign yesterday, McDonald's paying up seventeen dollar.
Yes, sir.
And I agree a hundred percent what you said. I'm telling you, I won't let you sign. But it's something, you know, I ask people, is it money or the people you work for? Can't nobody answer that question. And I'm straight up with you, bud.
Well, I'm gonna be straight up with you too. We've got two people right here in this county, just paramedics. And drives across that river every four.
Oh, I know, bro. I have a good bunch of, yes, sir.
And they would, and they've been in touch with me lately if they could come back over, if they would get, if we'd go twenty-four seventy-two, they'd be ready to come back.
I know Dillon County just went to it. And he loves it to death.
And guess where they're at?
Well, now, we just bought two ambulances two years ago, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we did. But let's look at something. What we have is spares. We actually bought three ambulances.
Okay.
But do we run them in the dirt to when we turn, put them on this auction block that we don't get anything for? Like the last two we had, the last, the two we got are spares right now. We'd be lucky to get two thousand dollars for them. We got to have them to, I mean, if we don't have ambulance to go to a car, what do we do? We don't have them, we're, right now, we're short because we don't have a person on. So what do we do when we don't have one because it won't start or the engine's blown or something like that?
Can you speak to that in terms of?
I'm gonna be limited of what I can say. I'm gonna be limited of what I can say. On that particular day, we did not have an ambulance down there.
And let me just say before you go, again, Mason, Mason's an amazing young man. And facts are just not clear publicly about what happened. And I don't think he answered that. But let me say that that young man, fortunately, he's old, he's a fine kid. His family and my family go back about three generations. He was in lawn care, well, his father had a great small business going. He's a great loss bar. And so I think what I'm hearing is, you know, short employees and we're short ambulances. And then now we've got, well, I'm liking this conversation taking place currently. What does that mean for a situation like what happened here?
Well, we have some people that step up and we have one shift that I think they pretty much have the truck staff down there. I'll tell you this last pay period, Ms. Chavis came to me. And we had employee. You ready? Hold on till you see. Hundred and twenty-eight hours overtime for two weeks. This guy needs the money, but this guy also was wanting to make sure that truck's staffed in the lower part of the county. But that's a hundred and twenty-eight hours overtime. We're killing him. Now, the other day, we had one that was out with his father. Deathly sick. We had somebody else that was out. We were able to make two trucks instead of three that day, so there wasn't a truck down there. When this call went out, our dispatch did a phenomenal job. They dispatched rescue, they dispatched EMS. I happened to be walking into Marion EMS base when I heard the tone go out and what it was going out for. I am not supposed to be on an ambulance right now. I hurt my back last June, but this is a fourteen-year-old child. And I went that way. We also dispatched the fire department. Fire department was there in five or six minutes. I was there in fifteen minutes. The ambulance, medic two out of Mullins was probably six minutes behind me because of their bridge out at Creek Bridge. So they had to come around Smith Mill Pond Road. Medic one was on the call. Medic one normally goes that way if we have to have somebody go that way. We also dispatched a helicopter. Helicopter landed. Also, a helicopter was there to treat this, this kid. Until y'all see what I saw. Some of you, it doesn't happen to you, but you need to know this is happening. This isn't just this kid. This is the residents of Gresham. They deserve ambulance just as much as the residents of Marion and Mullins. And it's time that we do something instead of saying, we don't know what we're gonna do. I put my foot down today and say it's up to y'all, guys. We gotta move forward.
Well, Joey, that, that, that young man died with my wife's first cousin and grandson. And he didn't, and then we're saying, hey, fourteen-year-old. I'm here to help, and I find these county councils are facing that young man right there because he represents that county. You know, so.
But that took a toll on me.
Oh, yeah.
Kids normally take a toll on me. But unless you there, you don't know.
Oh, I know, I know. And I wouldn't ask you a job with a shears, y'all need.
But that one, that one hit hard. And it continues to hit hard today. This shouldn't be why we, we are here. It shouldn't have came to this point. This shouldn't even be mentioned today. I should be in here talking about getting EMS better.
Do you think someone would have been available?
More out, more, more out to be. Because I think we can get more people here.
How many more people you gonna need, Joey? Six, eh?
Sir.
You think you can get six more?
Yes, sir.
How many are you short now?
Right now, with twenty-four forty-eight, I'm short three.
Three. I'm, I'm looking at you. You got some good guys that are behind you. I know they good.
I got a team, I got a team just behind me.
I know you do.
They might not be here, but I got a team that's behind me. And they see this every day. It hurts them just as bad as it hurts me.
But I hear a lot of things, Joey, 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 and I say, what's the problem? They can't answer the problem. Is it money or is it Joey? They can't answer the problem, Joey. So, yeah, it might be all of them. I don't know.
Like they, any employees should address the issue through the director and interim industry. They ask the process that we need to have in place and make sure that we're careful that we're not opening up about anything else.
Someone will text us to you and try to make Joey look bad. There's a group in particular, but we had an incident the other day where I got a text from Ms. Chavis wanting me to check on something, and it was not what was said.
Well, I think we should press that issue in the evening session. And you have any specific?
Yes, sir, I do.
Well, these, these numbers in the, here in the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the two seventy-three, that's, that's a tax that this counts. They're gonna have to come together and come up with some type of formula. You know, our tax a meal is sixty-seven thousand dollars. So you take ten meals. We do, we, we, we got a lot of, we got a lot of math we gotta do. We gotta, we gotta figure out, we understand where you're coming from, and we there with you. You don't just hear EMS or nine-one-one, you hear county, counties. So we don't like what happened. We don't like what's happened. And for a lack of a better term, I don't have an answer. We, we, we pledged to, that we were gonna get involved, we were gonna look and try to find a way as well. Any other counsel that they come in?
I, I do, Mr. Jim. Senator, a few years ago, I believe, with the federal money we got in, that's how we purchased those two ambulances. Is there any way that we could go back now, we've got some left? And let me go ahead and use that federal fund to be a benefit in this county?
Um, the short answer to your question, I don't know. We have to go back and research that. See what, if any, is left over from there and see how to proceed from there. But I believe there's creative ways that we might kill, help address some of the issues that he just made out. That's a very serious issue, you know, when we call nine-one-one, family member, friend, or whatever neighbor is live on the line, we will respond ASAP. And also, citizens deserve that. Then we have to keep in mind, we fail to realize, just like with law enforcement, EMS, all these emergency services, where we pick up the phone, call one, respond immediately. But what we have to do, we remind that these sentences are not free. You gotta pay for it. We just got to figure out a way to do that. I'm not sure the citizen will have buy-in in that because, you know, just like in the example you just made out what happened in prison. Such a sad situation. And I pledge from the state standpoint to do whatever we can to help address this issue that comes out, ambulances and so forth. There's more than one way of skinning a cat. By the way, we just want to get skinned. And I think we can do that, all of us working in concert. I think we can find a solution to this problem. Just can't keep kicking it out, brother. You know, it's not gonna go away. It's not gonna get any better. We just gotta figure out a way to address it. And we're approaching our budget process. That's the time to have this type of discussion and figure out where we are financially and how we can, and we can't, it's like eating an elephant. Uh, uh, we take one bite at a time. We like eat the whole, but with one bite sometimes that's not possible. But we gotta start the process and address this issue. So I think, I think we can, but I don't think we can solve that today.
Any other question?
I hear you, George Bryce, and I think the time is now. You said you came several years and nothing was done, but like you said, the time is now. And we will try to find an answer for you and, and law enforcement. Because I feel that if we don't, we're gonna be in a bad situation.
Yes, sir.
It's not gonna get any better.
Yes, sir.
And I see where you got back there, and I see you, you're not doing it for the money. You're doing it for your heart.
Yes, sir.
I was in it for a long time too, sheriff there too. You're not doing it for the money. You're doing it because you love it. You love the citizens of Marion. And, and we love the citizens of Marion too, and we're with you. I can pledge that you have my support.
Thank you.
And we're gonna do the best we can.
Thank you.
I think it's important that, that we as a council support you in this. I also think that when you made the statement of, have we seen the facilities, the living facilities? I've seen, I've been there, a piece of property that Marion County owns by the textbook. So I, I, I understand that you have worked. And I understand it's not an easy task, and we do appreciate what you all do.
Yes, sir.
And I, I know it's kind of odd just being able to staff the lower end of Marion County every couple of days. But this, if this movement, this shift around will be able to help, we'll do everything we can to get.
Well, I appreciate, and I appreciate that, you being able to go and look at those stations. If some of you have not seen them, I'm more than welcome to meet you there and let you see what these stations look like. We're just, we're just starting a corner. You know, and our, our employees deserve better than that. That's their living quarters for twenty-four hours. They deserve better than that.
It's a whole facility is stretched out, still there, the outline. The facilities are just completely outdated.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
I wanted to also say, as interim county administrator, I am also fully committed to pledging my full support. I did go out with you to see these facilities, and I want to make them better. I think working with county council, our community leaders, Senator Williams, we're gonna pledge to make this better. And I, you have my full support.
Thank you.
Adam fourteen, resolution designate in April as Fair Housing Month.
At this time, item, no resolutions at this time. One moment.
What I hear from county? Motion seconded, it's good. So is likewise. Yeah, I have out of fifteen administrative updates.
Mister Chairman and members of council, at this time, I do not have any capital sales tax updates um. For item A, item B, um the South Carolina Association of Counties Conference will be July thirty-first through August third. And um Ms. Davis does have some information to hand out to you. And I do not have any other miscellaneous items at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Item sixteen, request of comments by members of council.
I got one for you, Chair. I want to thank all Marion County employees for what they do. I know that a lot of them under, all of them underpaid. Uh I've got a uh. Proud of uh one particular individual, individual worked for the uh third enforcement, Mr. Swinton. Finally got him a. Uh litter on the, on his camera. And that's what we need. We need more people like that to get on these cameras and give these people tickets. And uh we could take care of the litter, but he got him one and I'm proud to tell him I'm proud of it. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir, Mister Councilman. Um. One thing that I am pledging to do and have done is have a monthly meeting with our directors and our supervisors. To talk about some of these items that were brought up in the audit, not just in the audit, but just a county policy as whole. Um there were a few departments that we identified that were not turning in money um. In a timely manner and we have spoken with those um departments and rectified that situation. And moving forward, again, we um I will be having a monthly meeting with my supervisors and directors to talk about. Um different county policies, the audit, and how we can move forward to make this county better and make our policies better. Yes, sir. I'll get with um my public buildings director, Mister Philip Rogers, and take care of that as soon as possible.
Anything else? And we have a meeting for an executive session for.
We do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Anything else? No contracts matter, legal matter. All right, we need a motion to go into the safety section for personnel. And favor motion says we have to say that. Oppose likewise. Yeah, it's heavy. Uh we need to come out of executive session and go back in regular session. Second, second, in discussion, all favoring motion, I would say that. Opposed likewise, yeah. We went in the executive session to discuss personnel. No action was taken.
A journal in my wheel, a journal.